I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda with flexibility. Moved by Kelly.
Second.
Seconded by Jenny. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
Moved.
By Paul. Seconded by Ryan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Presentations, we will postpone that tonight and that presentation will take place on March 23rd.
Do you need a motion to table that?
Oh.
On the agenda?
Yes, thank you.
I move that we table the presentation. The next regular board meeting.
Second.
Moved by Lucy, seconded by Ryan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And now, report from our student rep, Kaya.
So, um, the theater program just wrapped up their shows of Little Women. So that was the weekend of the fourth and fifth, and then the following weekend, I think it was the 12th. I went to one of their shows. It was really, really good, really well done. You can tell they put a lot of work into the, to it, so that was fun. Girls gymnastics just won their section, so they have a few gymnasts competing in state and then their team gets to compete in state, which is exciting. And then for Nordic skiing, one of our Nordic skiers, Sarah Brings, got to compete in the state. Me and she got 66th, which is pretty impressive. There's a lot of, lot of skiers there. And then, SLC put on kindness week the other week, so there was some positive messages around school and everyone's name got put into a heart. That was all over the windows, which was pretty amazing because every single student at the school had their name up there, which kind of was a cool thing to see. You out of the mass of people. And we got popsicles at lunch, which was a huge hit. And then, um, the Human Rights Club was putting on a supply drive the past two weeks. So this is the last week of it, so last chance to donate would be tomorrow and it goes to the St. Andrews Community Resource Center, which is cool because right back into our community. And we're taking, um, used clothes and shoes and then cleaning supplies, diapers, things like that. And if you want to donate, you can bring it to the schools and leave it in the bins in the front of the schools. And then, for Black History Month, Base, the Equity Club, Student Council, and the Honor Society all collaborated on making posters to put on, in each of the teachers' rooms. So in every teacher's room at the high school right now, there's a poster of a significant or historical black person. And, yeah, and it was pretty cool to see all of those because we don't do a lot of collaborating with the clubs, so it was cool to all come together and work towards that and then see all of them around school. But, yeah, that's everything.
Any questions? Alright, now the superintendent's report.
I'm a little bit out of, um, practice with Zoom and sharing my screen, so I, um, I'm going to give this a shot. Let's see. Sorry. Didn't get a chance to practice this. I'm looking for my tab. Let's see. Let me try this. Is that working? Can you tell if I'm sharing it? Oh wait, how about, nope, that's not working because I can see me. Hold on just a second. Let me try that again. It is showing though?
Yeah, if you just go to this, can you hit the slideshow button?
Yeah, I can. I just can't see that it's, uh, it's sharing. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, sorry, this is not. Alright. There we go. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so I'll just share my superintendent updates. Share a few things around the district, um, some updates about the middle school schedule, also legislative update, strategic plan update, some, uh, fun new communications tools and also upcoming community engagement events. So first, around the district, this is just out. We have some, um, net finalists for our National Merit Scholars. The, we see the finalists there and then also commended students, so that's quite a few students that are, are being recognized by National Merit. I think we talked about this before, but I'm, it's still worth noting if we have an Eleanor Anderson class of 2023 was, is going to head to Washington DC soon. Um, as one of two students representing Minnesota as part of the US State Senate Youth Program and it, um, it's quite an honor because she was selected. Um, and she has a, of, she's one of two in the state and it comes with a, a nice scholarship as well, so it's a pretty prestigious honor. Real World Design Challenge, once again, for the seventh year in a row, we have won, uh, the state competition and we have two teams that are going to the national championship. They've been working since October, um, to design an unmanned aircraft that delivers packages from a large airport to a rural environment. So once again, our real world design challenge teams are headed to the national competition. We also had quite a few students who were participating in state performances, um, state honor performances as well. So we had, um, through, through, there's a communications, there are a number of communications interns at the high school working with our communications department. And as part of that, uh, there were, there was, they arranged, well, I, I will just say Alice Soifert arranged for a couple of, uh, people to come in and do some career talks for our, for our students who are interested in communications careers. One was Kelly Gordon, who is a Monti-Medi parent and also a producer at NPR. And the other was Jake Lesh from Mindot and he is in charge of that snowplow naming, so, um, so we had students attend both of those. We're also celebrating 100 days of kindergarten at Wildwood. You'll see that there. Um, we had some OHA kindness stations recently. You notice, I, I'm actually wearing one of my gifts from OH, a little pin with, uh, that came with some positive messages, the district office recently. And, um, and we also have our K5 art show going on at, uh, the Wildwood Library right now. Middle school course registration just got going and there are a number of new offerings that are highlighted in there because of the new school schedule. So that is, that's happening right now and there are links for those people who are interested in, in checking that out. Just recently, uh, Director Payne and I did testify at regarding the Reading Act Bill, which is, um, which is, uh, talking about it, the, putting forth the idea that we would have money to support our literacy work. And so we went to support that, that, um, that bill and talk a little bit about what it is that we're doing in our district and then also what we would like to see that bill support so that we can continue our work around the letters training that we've started at, at Wildwood. So, um, I, I'll just say that, do you have anything else you wanted to add to that? Okay, um, there is another, there is another time that we've been requested to testify once again next week. And we are, um, two of our literacy specialists will come and join that one because there are going to be more questions and they are the ones that are best suited to answer those questions and talk about the specifics of what we're doing in our district and what we want to see going forward as supported by that Reading Act Bill.
I would love it. I don't want to take things away that you might be adding to the end, so, um, Representative Edelson has reached out to me and I spent a lot of time on the phone with her, working on the next iteration of the bill, which has been a really great experience, but it just goes to recognize the hard work of our superintendent and our teachers in, in the space of literacy because they are so interested in our work and, and what we're doing and asking for our input all the way down to build language and the presentation things that'll happen at the next committee hearing. So I appreciate all the work you've put in here, Barb. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I, I will just, I want to acknowledge Lindsay Scanlon and Judy Livingston, who went through the bill language and had some recommendations for how to really talk about reading comprehension and, and put some of that, that language, uh, that the reading specialist, that, all their knowledge that they bring to it and really to go through that and, and try and affect the way the bill is written, so. Um, so that was, that it's been, it's been nice that they have been so involved in it in particular, I would say. Um, recent, oh, sorry.
Senate companion?
I don't know. Is there a Senate?
There is a Senate companion, but it's not as far along yet and we have already been asked to testify there as well. Sorry, Barb. That was the news today. We haven't had a chance to talk. Um, I am not sure because it, um, I'm following a number of bills, but I know there's more, um, opportunity for discussion and language has not been aligned yet to the Senate Companion Bill. And so, um, after this next hearing, I'm hoping we'll be able to help support that language alignment before the next hearing or the first hearing in the Senate. I have not tracked that site as well because I've been so ungrossed in the, the House side. But, yeah. There is a piece coming. I know it's there.
Ryan.
Yeah, so this is really interesting and cool. So thank you guys for sharing the updates. Um, you guys mentioned you made some recommendations as part of the bill. Can you kind of share a little bit more about the recommendations you have made to this point?
Um, sure. So one, uh, what they've talked about in this bill is putting money towards, um, curriculum that is, that is aligned with the science of reading. And also a literacy specialist that would work with district, district level administration. And one of the things that, and training for, and training for staff. One of the things that we have talked about is really wanting to ensure that we have money that could go towards a literacy coach. We feel like that, and we know that that's our next step, so we have our Wildwood staff that has been trained. And now as they implement, they would really benefit. We know the benefits of having a coach to work with the staff. And so that was one thing that we talked about specifically when we went, uh, to testify. And recently with our literacy specialists with the, when, um, when Director Payne talked to, talked to Representative Edelson, she was bringing forward the language around reading comprehension that our literacy specialists wanted to make sure was strong in there because it is, read comprehension is so complex and they wanted to make sure that that was acknowledged, that this won't be a quick, you know, just one year fix. It needs to be ongoing funding. And that was a lot of our, our theme was that we want to see the funding go multiple years because we know this is a big undertaking for districts. Yeah. Also, I just want you to know, I, we reached out again to all of our local legislators and, uh, invited them in to come in for a tour to see what's happening in our schools. And so if they do take us up on that, we'll let you know so that you can join us on those tours during that time. Strategic plan update. As you know, we've been recruiting members for our action teams. We have 90 people, over 90 people signed up to join action teams at this point. Our leader training was supposed to happen this week and we will be scheduled, we've scheduled it for next week. And we already have the dates out there, so as people were signing up, they do know what dates are, those meetings are taking place. One of the things, um, we heard from you as a, a board is that you want to make sure that those people who cannot attend team meetings also have feedback opportunity. So once we get started, we're going to make sure that that is part of what we do as well. Um, so that's, that people who can't attend those, those strategic plan, action team, uh, meetings will also have other opportunities to weigh in as well.
How does 90 people, is that good, bad? Like what were you shooting for? How many people could participate?
Um, I guess I was, I think ideal, a nice sized team would be 15 to 20 and three of our teams are at that, are bursting, actually. And two of them are a little smaller, so we, I think we're in really good shape. We are. Yeah.
Jenny? Can't be turned away from this, correct?
No, however, I will say that not everyone's getting their first choice. That's why we asked everyone to sign up for multiple ones because, um, we are going to have to spread some people out. I want to highlight this, you know that, um, our communications director and MAFF have partnered on the Alumni and Friends website. And they are also partnering on this quarterly newsletter and our first one's going out next week. Um, and so it will be going out to all who have signed up for that Alumni and Friends, um, website on that website. You, you might have noticed the latest issue of the Globe, uh, with a new look is in mailboxes now. Well, actually, I think it's, it's arrived in every house, uh, last week or the week before. One of the new features on here is a number of QR codes. I don't know if you got a chance to see that, which takes you to stories that have happened throughout the year. Um, they take you to Facebook. They, it'll take you to like a, the story on CARE 11, so different places where we've had stories and our, and our students highlighted in, in different ways. So a nice, nice new feature. And, and I'll just mention, with that, we did have a couple of, um, community members who called because they were having, they didn't have a phone that allowed, that allowed them to use the QR code feature. And I will say that thanks to Leslie Loveus, she did call them back and found out which, which sites they were looking for and she just emailed them those sites so that they could get to the stories they wanted to. So there is a way. So if anyone out there is wondering how to get to those QR, they don't, they don't quite know how to get, use those QR codes, we will help as well because I think it's worth checking out a lot of those story, stories that we have. Um, so upcoming community engagement opportunities, as you know, we were going to have coffee and conversation this evening. We have, uh, if, because of the snow, we decided to move that. Um, but we do have action teams coming up, um, again, Zephyr Learning Showcase on March 23rd. We will have students here showing, showing their learning. Take note, uh, we want to encourage you to take note of that County Highway, uh, 12 Open House. That's coming up Wednesday, March 1st from 4:30 to 6:30. It's an opportunity for, for community to give feedback on that stretch that you can see in that picture. And so there's no presentation, but there will be, um, county employees here to talk to you about that, about that improvement. So we encourage you to attend that as well. Upcoming school tour dates are on the bottom there as well. Okay. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to add that, as many of you know, I have a middle schooler that was very excited about the new offerings for middle school because in the past, often there just have, have not been a lot of options. And so some of the new course offerings, um, really spoke to my kiddo and I was really excited. So I'm sure there's lots of other kids out there that are excited about these new offerings and, um, it was just fun to see excitement for what classes. So excited about the new middle school change with the schedule.
Okay. We'll move on to discussion items. Uh, board member calendar. Just trying to pull it up. Does anyone have anything to note? Lucy?
Though it's not on our calendar because I've not shared the date with Leslie and I apologize lovely for listening. On March 2nd, a week from tonight, at Seven Vines Vineyard, will be the 916 Gala, um, for board members. It is a hundred dollars to attend. It is a very fun event to meet other board members on our families, um, from across the 916 districts. Um, and I think it's five o'clock, but if you, um, just go to 916 website, you can find that registration information. I've already registered, so I will be there. I hope to see some of you there. I also wanted to call out the two day, uh, the two days we have at the Capitol. AMSD has their day on the 8th and MSBA is the 20th.
Sorry, you said AMSD is March 8th? Thank you. Anything else?
I guess I'll, um, call out quickly that, um, coming up in March, we will have our third Partner Ed, uh, Board Development. So, um, we had one of those, um, sessions last night as well. And so it's great to be able to, um, be on those together and share some learning. Um, and I think that those are important dates to call up because this is not a one and done. This is ongoing that we're to go all the way through, all the way to June. That, yeah, all the way through June. So, um, great for us to be able to do together as a board, I think, and learn together. Um, so if anyone else has any comments, I just think that, uh, the large group conversations and, um, and small group are great, not only for our school board, but also other board members across the state.
Hey. We'll move on to policies.
So this is the second reading of policies. I have not heard anything since the first reading of policies that we need to call out or change. This is just another opportunity for the community to know that these are out there and if they have any feedback for us. Um, we want to make sure we have this on for a couple of readings before, before approval. So unless anyone has anything for any of these policies, this is just our second reading.
We'll move on to action items. Uh, we'll look for an approval of donations and grants totaling $10,051.29.
So moved.
By Paul. Seconded by Kelly. All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district and are used towards the wishes of the donor. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Approval of general fund budget revisions, and I think we're zooming into Jeff.
Hello. Good evening.
Evening.
I think, uh, Barb, you said you don't remember how to do this, so I sent my PowerPoints to Jen because I really can't remember. There they are. Okay, thanks Jen. Um, so this is a follow-up to the, uh, meeting earlier this month when I presented, uh, some of the budget revisions for the general fund. So if you think about it, we're building the budget, um, even now for next year. So there's a lot of assumptions, estimates. Um, I guess I've got them listed here, the kinds of things that we typically see, um, that, that, um, that we make the revisions from. So enrollment changes, staffing updates, um, changes to previous estimates, assumptions, uh, legislative funding changes. That's not the case this year, but we do have, um, an additional federal grant. So, um, so I think we're hitting on each one of those items except for the legislative funding changes. Um, I will say that, um, you know, our auditors, uh, we're not required to do these revisions. I think our auditors like the fact that we do it. Um, so we're kind of presenting the board with a, here's, here's how the budget was built. Um, here's the changes we're seeing that will, uh, impact us as we get towards year end. But I think that, I just want to comment, when you look at, um, both revenue and expenses, we're, we're showing a decrease. Um, but we're actually decreasing expenses more than revenue, so the fund balance is going to, uh, year-end fund balance will be a little bit improved. But, but I think it's, it's important to say that those, um, these revisions are pretty small. So three tenths of one percent, um, on revenues. Um, just about, uh, one half of one percent on the expenditure side. So I, I just think that says that when we're putting the budget together, uh, again, like this time of year for next year, um, I think we're pretty good at, at putting some of our estimates and assumptions and those kinds of things in place. So Jen, if you could just go through, again, we went through this, um, on the, uh, learning session, uh, earlier this one. But, uh, biggest change there on revenue is, um, we're, we're revising the year-end, uh, student count. Um, actually by about, it's about 15 on a student database of over 3,000. Uh, but you can see the impact there and some miscellaneous revenue. Um, we do that, uh, federal funding grants, so a grant that, um, I think we knew was in place when we had the board approve the budget in, um, in June, but we didn't probably know the parameters and exactly how we're going to utilize the funds. So now we, we bring that to your attention. So, um, general fund revenue decrease of 127,000. Jen, next slide, please. On the expenditure side. Um, just, you know, a lot of these are just, as we analyze the budget, we have, uh, for, uh, student transportation, for instance, the actual number of routes that are in place. Um, so we, we, we know that where we, we've reduced the number of routes from what we thought at the start of the year, $68,000, uh, decrease there. Uh, staffing, uh, wages and benefits, obviously, again, we're doing the budget right now for next year. We pretty much carry over current staff, move them on salary schedules, et cetera. But there's staff turnover, there's retirement, so that number reflects, um, some of those changes. So $215,000, uh, decrease on the expenditure side. And then next slide, Jen, I think we'll look at, so preliminary budget. Um, revenue and expense, and then you're seeing the revised total. So we were expecting a surplus of about what the preliminary budget that you approved back in June, uh, about 38,000. And now you can see the, with the revision, so the decrease in revenue expense, about $125,000 surplus. So last slide, Jen, I think we'll show, um, all that will play out. And it, and I guess as we're going through the, through the fiscal year, we kind of say the, um, we kind of look at the restricted, the assigned fund balances. It's kind of staying, they, they will change a little bit. And so we, um, not significantly, so we flow any, any budget revision through that on assigned fund balance. So, um, so that's where you can see the actual, those are audited actual numbers. FY 2122 and then with the budget that we're asking you to prove, the on assign would go up by that 125,000. So that's where it looks like we would end up, uh, June 30, uh, 2023. So I think Jen, there may be, maybe not. Any questions? Nope, I think that's it. So again, we reviewed these, uh, these items earlier in the month, so any questions? Then our, again, our auditors like that we bring this and you take action. We build those numbers into the, into the revised budget.
Alright, any questions?
Man, I'm sure. I, I would just like to underscore Jeff that, um, for the public, that you did a much deeper dive with us at the workshop session, so, um, uh, appreciate that because it makes for the, this meeting to go a lot smoother with, with going through these numbers. So thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Alright, I think that's it. Can I have a motion to approve?
So.
By Paul, seconded by Ryan for approval of the general fund budget revisions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, now for approval of resolution on intent to proceed and sell LT, um, LTFM bonds. Jeff, again.
Okay, thank you. Jen, I think this time I, it probably makes more sense if you go to, I just have three slides here. If you go to slide three. Um, and yeah, then I'll go back to the timeline. So, um, for, for new board members especially, every, every June, uh, school districts are, are required to, if they want to participate in the LTFM plan. So it's long-term facilities maintenance program. We have the board approve a plan and it's, the board approves a 10-year plan, um, but we do it each year. So when we brought the plan to the board last June, we had talked about the fact that we knew we had had a, some, some significant rough damage, um, throughout the district. Uh, at that time when we needed to get this, um, into MDE for, on their timelines, um, we just didn't have the information. So, um, we're much farther along and I, I think back then we mentioned we would be coming back to the board, uh, to revise the current year plan. So again, 10-year plan, we're asking you to, we're actually revising what we sent to the, uh, MDE back in June and it really is the FY, uh, 24 plan. So, um, so what we're, what we're wanting you to do is approve the resolution to, um, to move forward with the sale of. to move forward with the sale of LTFM bonds. And at the same time, you're approving our submittal of a revised plan. So we've been working with MDE, we've been talking to them. Once the board approves the, if you approve the resolution, then it'll move along and we'll want the an MDE, hopefully we'll approve our revised plan. So so essentially what we're changing with our plan is when we when we brought the plan to the board back in June, there was a, it's about one point three million dollars that we receive each year. As a part of that, we're always fixing roofs, doing roof replacement. Pretty much an annual appropriation of that one point three million is about five hundred thousand dollars to repair roughs. So we're usually not able, we're not keeping up. And but when we look at all the different programs, that's that's about the amount that we can that we can appropriate towards roofs. So so we've been doing that. And as I say, there, this annual approach appropriation, assume the replacement of current. So we're replacing the single ply roofs that we had in place with the fifth that that have a fifteen year warranty. And we kind of played the game in our LTFM plan that that appropriation would need to continue forever. And where we are building in five hundred thousand, you take into account construction inflation, et cetera. But we're leaving that five hundred thousand dollars in place. It's probably really four hundred and fifty the next year and four hundred the next. We're kind of falling behind on our our need to replace roughs. So so with the with the storm damage from the storm last spring, we want to replace those roofs with a multi ply. So again, we've been doing single ply roofs, most districts, all districts in the metro have gone with the multi ply built ups. And they provide a thirty year warranty. So what we want to be able to do is do all of the damaged rough. It's it's all of the damaged roofs, it's pretty much across the district. And we would do it right now by selling bonds. We're estimating right now project costs, there will be an insurance reimbursement. Or just, we're estimating right now when it exceeds six point one million dollars. We're estimating bond sale at four percent. And and so what we're changing is so that annual appropriation of five hundred thousand to do a small piece on the high school or the middle school will be replaced. We'll we'll sell these bonds and that five hundred thousand will go towards amortizing the bonds. And we're looking at at, I guess I've got it there, approximately six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And we're doing a fifteen year bond sale. So essentially, we're taking the five hundred thousand, that might do a small roof repair. Now we're going to pay off these bonds over a fifteen year period. Now we have a thirty year thirty year warranty. So we're going to have, I might not be around to see this, but we're going to have fifteen years of no roof replacement with these, with the thirty year warranty. So and and I'd said it there, we had done some little bit of replacement in the prior years with the with the dual ply built up roofs. And those, and unfortunately, not a big area, not huge areas. But those where we had done that kind of work, there was no damage from the from the hailstorm. So that's kind of the financial picture then. Jen, if you can go back to slide two, so here's kind of where we're at. We'd ask the board, school board approval of the intent resolution and the revised LTFM plan. We think next week we should have, this is taking some time. Obviously, it's a big claim, we should be able to finalize the insurance reimbursement next week. And we can put that together with bids from roofing contractors minus the reimbursement. Use these bonds and we're going to have to have the board approve roof repl- the roof replacement bid, some hopefully we can do that in early March. And then we'll move through with the with the bond sale. And the project, hopefully, will start. We want to do some areas, got one contractor who will probably get the bid. Would like to, there's areas we can start early once while school, the skill and session. We'll probably proceed into the fall when school's back in session. But we should have all the roofs completed by hopefully the end of September. So project would be, I mean, May through end of September. So questions?
Ryan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we lost a slide. But on the the first slide you were showing, you you talked, and I forget the wording, but it basically discussed that this is something that would an appropriation that would need to continue forever. You can certainly accuse me of being naive and not understanding, and that might be, you know, entirely accurate. But I'm just trying to wrap my brain around why that's something that we would need to budget for forever, I am not.
Yeah, yeah. We just, for board members have been on, been around for a while. And if you looked at our LTFM plan, we, I would say every year going out for even for the ten year plan that we had the board approve last June, we were always doing some, and and it's not that, it's not that they're repairs. It's that it's that it's time to replace a rough. So but when you only have five hundred thousand dollars a year to appropriate, because there's other commitments, other needs with that one point three million dollars of annual LTFM funds. So I would just say, I don't think that's being facetious. That's, we would, we would continue to have have a need of at least five hundred thousand dollars per year for roof replacement. So not repair, I, am I answering your question? But it's just part of the annual, I mean, it's it's, we kind of have a schedule of, okay, the this part of I think they're broken down by different letters, like this part, middle school be this section we're going to do in twenty twenty four. So that's why I'm saying it seemed like there might be a year where we're caught up. Most likely not. So I'm just saying that right now, we take those annual LTFM funds and say we have to do some section of roof replacement and we'll appropriate five hundred thousand dollars. Could be that a year we really need eight hundred thousand dollars, but we have other needs with those LTFM funds. So this will kind of take care of that. In thirty years, you're going to have to look at replacing all the roofs, but.
Yeah, fair enough. I appreciate the comment.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Moved by Jenny. Do I have a second? Seconded by Kelly for approval of resolution on intent to proceed and sell LTFM bonds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, now for the AIPAC presentation, thank you. Oh, let's see, do we have?
Ally's on, oh, there she is.
Hi.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I will share my screen here. All right, I am here on behalf of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee tonight to present the annual vote of concurrence. My name is Ally Middlebrook. I am a district wide social worker. And along with Jen Reichel, our Director of Teaching and Learning, we are district representatives for our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. So as a review of what the AIPAC is, or the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, Minnesota statute states that a school district in which there are ten or more Native American students enrolled must establish an AIPAC. These committees serve in an advisory role and help ensure that Native American students are receiving culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunities. We currently have forty children from twenty three families who identify as Native American who attend schools in our district. In terms of the resolution of concurrents, prior to March first of each year, the AIPAC must meet to discuss whether or not they concur with the educational offerings that have been extended by the district to Native American students. If the AIPAC finds that the district and school board have been meeting the needs of Native American students, they issue a vote and resolution of concurrents. If they find that the district and or school board have not been doing that, not been meeting the needs of our Native American students, they issue a vote and resolution of non concurrents. This year, our AIPAC has voted in concurrents. And then to give a brief update on what the AIPAC has been up to this year, we have met three times so far this year, and we have two more scheduled meetings before the end of the year. Meetings always include a community dinner, and if time allows a native craft activity, which allows for some of that cultural community building time. We have also examined cultural trunk purchases, which I'll explain a little more later. We have filled out and submitted the application for the state American Indian Education Aid, which we were approved for. We discussed and voted on, or the AIPAC discussed and voted on annual compliance. The AIPAC has also begun discussion on a land acknowledgement statement that they are hoping with various other stakeholders to continue to work on creating and eventually have the district adopt as the goal. And then looking ahead, we are looking towards the Minnesota Indian Education Association Conference. And we would like to send some more staff members again this year. We had some staff members ten last year in April. And this is a great professional development opportunity for staff members to learn more about Native American history and culture and how best to support Native American students. So the AIPAC's action step plans continue to increase attendance at our AIPAC meetings, increasing school and classroom library texts that highlight authentic Native American experiences, creating a touch point for high school students to share college and scholarship information specific for native students, increasing opportunities for native and non-native students to engage in cultural activities and continuing to build culture trunks for classroom use. Now I'm expand a little more on what these culture trunks are. So culture trunks are typically trunks or totes filled with Native American items that can be used in the classroom to enhance teaching and learning of Native American history and culture. These pictured here are some of the items, just some of many that we purchased with our American Indian Education Aid Funds last year. You can see a buffalo hide drum, a jingle dress, ojibwe moccasins, a cedar basket and a Dakota beaded bag. All items were made and purchased from native craftspeople and vendors. And we are working with teachers this year to write lesson plans that align with content standards that will incorporate these items. And these will provide valuable experiential learning for students. So that concludes my presentation. What questions might you have?
Ally, any questions? Lucy.
Ally, can you explain to me our connection, if any, to TNEC?
I am not very familiar with TNEC.
Okay. I have a question for you, Ally. So last year, I think you shared that you were hoping, and I don't have my notes in front of me from that meeting, but the number of people that were attending the meetings, and you were hoping for a goal of that increasing. And I see that as well, again, as an action step, I was curious what that's looked like year over year, if you're seeing any increase in in families attending.
Yes, we are. So this is our third year, having an AIPAC established. The first year, we had one family attend. The second year, we had two families consistently attend. And this year, we have four families consistently attending. So we are seeing that growth, which is wonderful. And so that just continues to be an overarching goal to just continue to make sure that our Native American students and families are aware of this opportunity and feel invited to attend meetings.
Madam Chair, Ally, thank you for that presentation. Can you expand a little bit on what is the, what's the discussion of a land acknowledgement? What would that entail?
Yeah, so this came from a few high school teachers who attended an AIPAC meeting earlier this year. Couple of years ago, some of their students, it was a collaboration between an English classroom and a science classroom, worked on a project in which they researched kind of the history of Minnesota and the indigenous people who have resided here and started working to create a land acknowledgement statement. And they presented, the teachers presented that to the AIPAC. And the AIPAC really liked that as a starting point and that we, they would like to continue the possibility of looking at creating that that statement that might be adopted by the district as a way to acknowledge the indigenous people who who resided in Minnesota and still do reside in Minnesota.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, like that. Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
We'll move forward with our our vote. Do I have a motion to approve the AIPAC presentation of the annual compliance vote? Moved by Ryan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jenny. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, now, Shen Reichel for the Achievement and Integration Presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be here tonight to share our achievement and integration plan. This is a follow up to the board workshop where I went deep into the specific details. And so tonight, we're emerging out of those details to really talk holistically about achievement and integration. As I start this presentation, I want to outline here some of the things that we're going to talk about tonight. I want to talk first about the Minnesota Achievement and Integration Program. I want to talk about where the school board is involved in this process, a little history of our participation in achievement and integration. And then we'll shift into specifically the program that we've written a plan about and focus in on those strategies which attend to, here is the work that we want to do. And I know we had some great questions at the work session about how might we measure those things, so that I will revisit those pieces as well. So as we think about the Achievement and Integration Program, it is established in Minnesota State Statute. And really, the role is to close achievement and opportunity gaps. And in twenty one twenty two school year, there were a hundred seventy one districts across the state who participated in A and I programming. Again, the purpose is threefold. We want to pursue racial and economic integration. I'll talk more about that, but that is our partnership upon which the this, the whole premise of achievement and integration is built. We want to increase student achievement, and that is something I know that is a consistent thought and work that we do as a school board and as a district. And then creating equitable opportunities to reduce those, the academic disparities that we see among student groups. So as a reminder, there are four ways that a school district could be eligible to participate in achievement and integration. Racially isolated, where the the protected class student district wide is more than twenty percent comparing to their adjoining districts. And adjoining district, and as you can see, that is where how we are involved. We are eligible for funding because we are, we geographically join District six twenty two, which is North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale, and they have been our partner, I will share with you on the next slide, since two thousand nine. You can also participate by having a racially identifiable school or voluntary participation. Again, we have participated because we are adjoining six twenty two. So what what's important to know about the school board role? Well, we want to make sure that you understand that MAU is eligible for achievement and integration funding. The purpose of tonight's presentation is really, we need to have a school board approval in order to participate and know that we have a deadline of March fifteenth to submit our plan to the state. You have approved the A and I plan every three years for many years. Know that as part of the the compliance, we need to do a presentation on how we're making progress toward our goals. And that is coupled with the world's best workforce that's presented in the October timeframe each year. And then know that achievement and integration, while the state provides three big buckets that we need to address, it is a local plan and it is designed to align with our strategic plan. Before I talk about the next slide, I do, I totally forgot because I was ready to go. Before I talk about the next slide, I do, I totally forgot because I was ready to go. I'm Jen Reichel, and I serve as the Director of Teaching and Learning, and I want to say thank you to a few folks who are on the screen tonight. Our Achievement and Integration Planning Team was invited to attend, and because it's conferences tonight, there were a number of folks who were not able to attend. We do have administrators and teachers, counselors, and we have done several parent focus groups, and Ally even did a student focus group to seek input about our plan. So thanks for being here, everyone. And so now I'm going to go back to what is the history of MAUD's participation. So like I said earlier, MAUD has been participating in achievement and integration with North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale since 2009. Prior to that, the district was a member of EMI, the East Metro, each, East Metro Integration District with nine other districts. And then between EMI and Achievement and Integration, MAUD has voluntarily participated in integration programming for more than 20 years. So what does the state expect from an achievement and integration plan? Well, they say we need to create and monitor plans to address three areas. Increase racial and economic integration, and again, that is directly related to our partnership with 622. We want to reduce achievement disparities, and we want to increase access to effective and diverse teachers. When we write our plan, there are several layers of what we have to write, and I talked about these a couple of weeks ago when I met with you at the workshop. And we have to have goals, and those goals are tied to those three areas on the left of the screen. Each goal has to have one or more strategies. Those are really the action-oriented pieces that we're going to implement. And then those key indicators of progress, MDE likes to call those the KIPS, and those key indicators of progress are how we measure our success. And while this is written as a three-year plan, we are expected to show progress on an annual basis. So we do need to be looking at our, our quantitative and qualitative data. And then as part of that plan that we submit to the state, we are asked to show where we are creating efficiencies and eliminating duplicative programs. What MDE and Achievement and Integration does not want is for this to be a separate piece, but they want to have us acknowledge here are the things that are the work that we're doing, and how can achievement and integration help us to enhance the work that's already in place? And then in order to move forward, we need to have school board approval. So now I'm going to shift to, so that was the overview of achievement and integration, and now I'm going to dig into, here is our plan, the way that it's currently, our, our draft plan that we'll submit to the state. So we have seven strategies to support four goals. And these are the strategies, and I'll talk about them each individually. Know that for the strategies that are currently labeled here, one through five, they align to a specific goal. Strategies six and seven help support multiple goals. And so while I will talk about those just one time tonight, know that they are repeated because those are really integral to the ongoing work. And it's important to note that as we think about our strategies, they really are designed and implemented to benefit all students. We are not targeting a particular group of students. We're looking at the whole student body. So let me dig into those seven different strategies. The first one is to improve our K-12 coherent math instruction. So really, we're focusing on refining our district math scope and sequence, and that term scope and sequence really means our plan for math instruction so that students, as they move between grades, can have a seamless approach to their math instruction. We have to do our job to make sure that students can flow through our classes and, and be ready for what's next for them. We also want to assure that, ensure that more students have a readiness to be successful in higher-level math classes. And then finally, one of those indicators of progress is increasing our proficiency rates on math assessments, which could be those class assessments, our FastBridge and our NWEA map tests, and ultimately on those MCA scores that I report out about during World's Best Workforce. Related, we have a second goal that's all about math literacy instruction. So very similarly, we want to focus on refining our district literacy scope and sequence. Building on, so I shared with you that MDE really wants us to partner this plan with the work that's already happening in our district. So we have integrated into our plan, increasing access to stronger early literacy instruction and the science of reading. You all know that we have walked down this path of doing letters training with our K-2 folks and our OHA special ed staff, and we know that the science of reading is really for more than primary grades, but that's, those are the grades that we started with. And we're looking for ways to increase that professional development that is appropriate for levels beyond K-2 in the science of reading. And then again, we're going to measure, one of our measurements of progress is increasing proficiency rates on those literacy assessments. And again, those are class assessments, our FastBridge, our NWA map, and those MCA scores. And then we know that part of literacy instruction is to get appropriate texts to support literacy instruction into the hands of kids. We, I have shared with you that the foundation, in order to be eligible for achievement and integration, that we partner with District 622, North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale. And so that, that integration really is creating authentic experiences for kids from our schools and kids from their schools to get together. And so our staff that works in, in MAUD and Ally is kind of facilitating that staff, and some staff in 622 have begun to talk about what could that partnership look like? Historically, we've tried to get our high school kids to connect, and we know that many of our high schools' kids are very busy. And so given the experiences that some of the new leaders in 622 have, and some of the activities that are happening here, we're shifting our focus from middle, from high school to middle school. And so we're looking to help our middle school kids, a small group of our middle school kids from our district and from 622 to interact primarily in a virtual way to share stories and grow their leadership skills. And then the second piece that is required from the state is to recruit and retain highly qualified diverse teacher candidates. And so for that, we are looking at how can we increase our recruitment strategies and increase our partnerships with post-secondary schools and other organizations to hire highly qualified educators. So while the grant or the, the A&amp;I funding asks us to focus on increasing diverse teacher candidates, both of these particular action steps really give us an opportunity to hire great teacher candidates and not, not only teacher candidates of color. So really, we're looking at that highly qualified is the biggest piece for us. And then the, I have three more left. So this second to the last slide about our strategies is all about restorative practices implementation. And I wanted to spend just a little bit more time on restorative practices to make sure that our folks who are in the boardroom right now or who are in the community may have some questions, because I think that the, the concept of restorative practices is one that we haven't done a great job as a district of really helping folks understand. So when we think about restorative practices, it's all about expanding ways that help students understand how their behaviors impact others. Part of restorative practices is ensuring that all students feel welcome and that they feel like they belong in our school system. In a quick nutshell, restorative practices are adult responses to student behaviors that assist in the development of self-discipline that will serve as a foundation for success in developing healthy relationships. There are many benefits from restorative practices, but a few are. Students work to develop self-discipline, which we know is a lifelong skill, that they learn constructive methods of self-regulation. They learn some self-advocacy skills. This is among my favorite. They learn skills to fix the harm they've caused, which really requires more effort than simply being, serving a detention or a suspension. And I know that you all on the board have been able to see our behavior intervention document. That's part of the annual student handbook that comes your way. This slide deck will be available, and so anyone who's in the community, if you haven't yet had a chance to dig into that behavior intervention, it really shows how we use restorative practices alongside other disciplinary measures in order to support students to have, make good choices while they're in school. And then the last two strategies, this one, as you will likely guess, is among my favorites. I am a huge believer in professional development, and so we want to make sure that we're offering context-appropriate learning for teachers about math and literacy instruction, as well as increasing engagement strategies in any content area. And we want to focus in on increasing opportunities for more teachers to have learning about the science of reading. And then finally, among the, the goals that the board consistently talks about is increasing our outreach and family engagement opportunities. So we want to offer more opportunities for, to partner with families that are focused on student success. And then we want to make sure that we're providing that additional academic support for those students who have noted needs of that academic support. Know that with our outreach and family engagement, this is not more conferences, but finding different ways to get parents to serve as partners in the learning for kids. So on to the funding. So know that achievement and integration is supplemental to what we already do in our district, and our district has access to just under $400,000 of achievement and integration dollars. This new plan sustains a few things that have been in place for the last three years. We have a .85 district-wide social worker, and the reason that is a .85 and not a 1.0 is that we have allocated some of our Indian Ed dollars that Ally just spoke about to supplement that .85, and so Ally is that 1.0, but across two funding sources. We have a 1.0 high school restorative practices person, a .5 middle school, and that is paired with ADSS dollars to create a full-time position. And then we also have allocated a halftime teacher at Wildwood for reading intervention, and that is also paired with ADSS. So you have heard me come with our interventionist to talk about that intervention data, that last one, the .5 reading intervention, that is critical to those early successes in literacy that we've seen. As we have revised our plan, we've made some shifts in how we intend to allocate dollars. And so our intention is to add a five-tenths or .5 restorative practices staff member at OHA. Significant professional development, because that is what makes a change to the day-to-day teaching and learning. And our intention is to move ahead with AVID. And AVID is academic-based professional development, and they, what I love about it is it's contextual-based, meaning that a math teacher goes to professional development with other math teachers and learns about skills and strategies that they can use that are specifically for math instruction. They also offer that for literacy and general engagement. So folks who teach science or music or arts are all part of that professional development. We are also allocating dollars to professional development that ASPIRE. So ASPIRE is similar to letters. It's with the same company, Lexia, but this has an intention to focus learning for teachers in grades three to 12 and not, not focused solely on that primary literacy. And so we're trying to grow the science of reading across the board for folks where that is integral to the work they do. Part of our dollars are outreach supplies. So, so these are some of the things that Ally has so that she can support our economically disadvantaged families. And this also helps to fund our back-to-school bash and our summer kickoff events. And then we talked about last time, increasing our decodable texts. So those, those books that are written at just the right, in just the right way to support kids in their developmental reading instruction. And then as we wrap up, and I will certainly offer opportunities for questions, we need to submit our application by March 15th. Know that we will continue convening our Achievement and Integration Leadership Team to monitor progress toward our goals. And then some additional work that will take place is finalizing those details of the Student Activity Partnership with 622 for next year. So that's what I have for you tonight. What questions do you have for me about our Achievement and Integration Plan?
Thank you, Jen. I'm going to jump in first and just ask you to elaborate a little more on how the strategies are designed and implemented for all, for the benefit of all students and not just specific groups.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So I'm going to use the examples of increasing our coherent K-12 math and literacy scope and sequence or our programming. When we invite teachers to work on digging into their standards, writing or refining their common assessments or embedding additional strategies, those strategies are not for a certain group of kids. The intention is that that work that teachers do will benefit all students in their class, because we know when we all do better, we all do better. The same thing with our literacy. The intention is to really think about our core programming in order to impact student achievement. And then we have other sources of support like ADSS that I referenced here, that is that intervention or pull-out model. And I can talk about ADSS at a different meeting if the group would appreciate some additional understanding about that. Restorative practices is all about all kids. Our partnership will be a small group of kids, because that's an opt-in voluntary integration piece. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Are there other questions? Kelly?
This is a comment to you, not a question. You've answered all of my questions in the previous presentations of this, but I, I just feel like this is such an amazing, comprehensive, wide net that this is casting to be able to offer not only the opportunities for AVID, which was designed sort of for the, kind of the, the group of the students in the middle, the ASPIRE training for extending that literacy and the science of reading support for beyond just the early learners, the, the strategies throughout AVID that can be used across content levels or content areas and grade levels, the support of additional staff, the resources, knowing that kids who can connect with those staff and self-regulate and learn about how to empower themselves and to deal with, you know, their, their behavior and just how they show up at school and all those skills around leadership. I just feel like this is a very wide net that is cast that will impact the entire district. And so I just want to say thank you for this presentation.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Jenny?
Yes, Kelly, thanks for highlighting the words "previous presentations." I, for the last two weeks, have felt just lost looking for answers. And tonight, how it was laid out made so much more sense. So just as a comment, not a question, I thought this was a brand-new program you were throwing at us two weeks ago at the study session. I had no idea, sitting here, knew Ryan wasn't here, Paul, you've been here a year. Some history the first time around would have saved me a lot of the last two weeks of emailing people, asking for, what is this? I'd never heard of it. So I just think some history would have helped two weeks ago. I thought it was a brand-new program.
Thank you for that feedback.
Questions? Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Jen, for the overview. I appreciate it. You mentioned that this, this program has been in place for quite some time now, and one of the, the key focuses is reducing achievement disparities and lowering the achievement gap. You also referenced the fact that there are key indicators of progress in place, and we have to track very closely to those. Do you have any historical documentation or feedback you can share with us around the progress that this program has specifically made at MAUD and how we can continue to invest in this program to feel confident that it's providing improvement to that achievement gap?
Yes, so here's what I will say. In this revamp of the, the plan that we're intending to submit to the state of Minnesota, I feel like our team this year has done a much better job of noting key indicators of progress that allow us to track on an annual basis. We have had in past iterations of the plan, things that weren't quite as quantitative and, and the ability to share with you all the progress that we've made. And uh, and the ability to share with you all the progress that we've made. For example, one of our key indicators of progress in a past, in the most recent plan. Was based on an assessment that's given every two years as uh, from the state, the Minnesota Student Survey. And so that was something that we could not track progress for. And so moving forward, we're able to share with you on an annual basis here, the specifics of what we're intending to address. Like reducing Ds and Fs across the board, um, like increasing the number of common assessments that we have in place in our math and literacy. Those are things that were not written into the plan, but that are i- in this iteration of the plan. Um, I, I will be able to much better share with you. I can say that with the focus on our literacy, for example, with our Wildwood reading interventionist. We have seen significant, significant growth in student um, scores in that intervention. And I shared with the group um, last spring on our intervention report. Um, we had a couple of our intervention folks who were able to share some of those highlights. Um, i- in the past iteration of the plan, we had a goal about increasing. Or one of our strategies was to increase our staff of color. We've not made progress there. And so we made a decision, um, rather than looking at the end result, to look at our process of, of expanding our recruitment. And that will hopefully net us great teachers in general. Um, so, so yes, I can tell you a little bit, but unfortunately, the way that the plan was written in the past. They weren't as quantifiable key indicators of progress as I'm able to report on next year.
Okay, appreciate the overview. I'm glad we're making progress towards objective measures. I, I think um, can't speak on other board members behalf here. But it's much easier to get on board with programs when we have things that we can track over time.
I agree. It, and I think um, I think as a leadership team, that's something that we have talked about recently. Is that it feels comforting to be able to quantifiably say, I have met that goal. I'm, I'm making forward progress toward the success that we're looking for. So that was intentional as we wrote this plan, was to be very specific about those indicators. So that we could come back to you and say, here's where we're making progress.
Thank you.
See.
Jen, I appreciate all the work you've put forward here. As a newer member to our district, you've had to take a historical piece and really work it forward. And thinking about what's next for us and thinking that continues improvement model. And that's important um, to all of us, I feel, and I appreciate the time there. The other thing I think you've done very nicely with this plan is there are so many overlapping pieces, right? So also we've got new acronyms, Avid, you know, aspire. Uh, I'm sitting here thinking, oh, I can see the MTSS plan in here. I can see some P by S things working in here. And for our new board members, there's a lot of education acronyms and there's a lot of things that we do that just aren't common street knowledge. Um, so I really appreciate the way that you've been able to take these things and pull them all together. So we're not having to look in twelve different directions all the time, but we have a really focused forward moving plan that aligns with many other things that we are doing as a district. And so as a much improved plan, and I really appreciate that and look forward to voting for it.
Thank you.
Ellie?
And I was gonna kind of yes and what um, Lucy said, that when the previous plan was created, were you even part of the district?
I was not.
Yeah, and so um, that was one of the things that I have learned in um, only a very short time, working with Jen here in Madamida Schools. That um, with writing goals that you um, strongly believe in making sure that those goals are smart goals. And that there's a measurable component to that. And so um, I look forward to that as well as we move forward with the new plan. Um, that you've kind of had your, your work in, around this one. Um, because the historically, that necessarily probably wasn't your work. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yes, a- a- and really, um, interestingly, um, the leaders here and in six twenty two. Our, our partner district, we're all new. So Ally came in after this plan was written. And she was um, that, that became one of her um, big rocks of um, work that she did. Was to help to implement the plan and our partners in six twenty two are all new as well. So we've really learned together and I think that has benefited our process to have all of these different lenses. To be able to come together and say, all right, we can have a fresh start. What is meaningful and important for our district as we move forward?
Jenny?
Could you give an example or a school or an age in our district, an age group where restorative practices? You see that is us um, is working strongly. You see the positive benefits of restorative practices. I mean, out of our four schools we have, or you can lump it into a ages, teenagers, elementary.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I would highlight specifically our middle school right now. They have been very intentional to work with students who have office referrals. With the goal of reducing the number of times that a student is referred for a second or third time to the office. And they have seen significant decreases in those repeat offenses. Which means that kids are able to stay in class and do what school is intended to do. Is to help them continue to learn. The more frequently that a student has an office referral means they are out of the classroom. So I don't have the data right in front of me, but I can certainly follow up with that. But I know that that is one of those successes that has been um, shared in our administrative team. With the middle school in particular, in tracking that documentation this year alone.
That answers my question.
I'm sure just a comment, uh, just a comment, Jen. Um, I'm gonna build on what Lucy mentioned. I heard the word overlap. And I think we should under, I, I'd like to underscore the fact that. There's a lot of overlap with this plan that is, is driving at goals and achievements. That we are already striving to do, striving to achieve. And we're essentially leveraging dollars from the state for our own benefit. Um, that aligns with what we want to do for the most part. So I'd like to just underscore that for, for you and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, Kai.
Um, this is just a comment too, but the ask, the part about diverse teachers. I just want to say that is not just an issue on um, like the administrator level. But I've heard that reiterated so many times among students that there's a desire for di- diverse teachers. So Jen, to see some steps being taken in action to be made to have that happen is really refreshing. Because I've heard a lot of complaints about that among students. So I know that a lot of people would be in favor of that at the high school.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to say I have a, a somebody out there who just sent me a text. So I can follow up Jenny with the, or um, with Director Peterson about the referrals. So in quarter one, there were a hundred and ten referrals to the office at the middle school. Of those nineteen students had more than one offense and there were sixty six restorative conversations. And from those sixty six conversations, there were only five repeat offenders to the office. So there's your quantifiable data of keeping more kids in class. And, and thank you to my text friend out there who just shared that information with me.
Ellie?
Hi, I just wanted to say that it, anytime that you share your perspective from the student side. To me, that holds so much more weight than any of all of these adults sitting around talking about it. So thank you for jumping into that conversation as the student rep. It's just, it's very meaningful. I, to me, anyway, I'm speaking personally to hear from someone who's living in our schools right now. So thank you.
Kelly, thank you for doing that. Um, I too would like to say thank you. And I was just so stinking excited that I got that piece of data to share right over you, Kaiya. And I think that is why we're here is to um, empower student voices. And so thank you for, for lifting that up for the group.
Absolutely. Well, I just, I want to echo what has been said also, just about having the way you've written the plan and the measurable outcomes. I think um, it's really impressive how you've articulated it and laid it out. And ultimately, our goal is to ensure that our students are meeting those um, their grade reading proficiency and reading, math proficiency. Because that's, that's what's going to enable them to have the life that they, that they want to, to go the direction that they want to go. So every, I just want to, you know, restate that every, everything in that plan goes toward. That pursuit of setting that child up for success academically and in all their endeavors. So thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Lucy?
I move approval of achievement and integration plan.
By Lucy, do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kelly. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Hey, now, thank you, Jen. Have a good night. Uh, now we'll move to school board committee reports. We'll start with AMSD, Lucy.
AMSD met on February third. Um, the report was focused on the governor's budget. And so a representative from MDE came and went over the budget. There were thirty eight slides of budget information for us. And that, these are all the governor's proposals and then it has to work through a process, obviously. But in his um, budget, there is money tied to the basic formula. There's money tied to inflation, hopefully. Um, cross subsidy money, universal meals, the whole literacy plan, MTSS, early childhood, after school money, mental health money. Educator workforce goals and more. Those were the highlights. Um, there's quite a bit in that, but there's a long process ahead of us. Um, but we now know where the governor stands and will be advocating for in his budget.
Next, the MAFE, Kelly.
Um, so MAFE is actually meeting this coming Monday, the uh, twenty seventh. So I'll have a report for you next time, but I just wanted to mention about MAFE, that the gala is coming up in March. Um, and I was actually looking at my phone to make sure I had the right date, so I didn't share the wrong date. Um, can anybody beat me to it? Thank you. I thought it was the last thing, just wanted to be sure. Um, so thirty first. And I will be reaching out to all of you about um, uh, what that looks like as far as um, possibly doing a school board. Basket of some sort. So um, for that event, if you are interested in that. Um, but I will come with you next time for, after our meeting, because we, our timing was off a little bit this month.
Thank you. Uh, next is uh, School Board Association update. That's me. Um, Lucy mentioned earlier that the MSBA Day at the Capitol is scheduled for March twentieth. If you intend to go, please be sure to let Leslie know and she can make sure everybody's registered. Um, there are a number of meetings that MSBA has, so I thought I would just make sure they're on your radar. There's coffee and conversation meetings on Tuesday mornings. And on, during session on Fridays, there's the Friday chat room. And that um, is when they discuss government, the government relations team gives an overview and update. And it's an informal discussion, but I think um, it's mostly focused on the legislative piece. And then they've started the MSBA third Thursday webinar series, um, and the next one will be March sixteenth. That's all I have. Next is Lucy, nine sixteen.
Um, nine sixteen, we met just a couple of weeks ago, February first, I believe it was. Um, it is Career and Technical Education Month, and so we had students come and present on their programs in nine sixteen and CT areas. We heard about a grant um, with Kerry on MTSS evaluation. And so it'll be interesting to hear. We heard about a new special of licensure program that um, our, definitely our superintendent sits on that advisory group for that. That they're looking at moving um, not ASD, um, ABS licensed candidates. To um, EBD and another licensure, or ABS licensure. So they have more teachers re- um, prepared to teach in category three and category four classrooms. And then the GALA, which I've already mentioned.
Okay, other committee reports. Kelly?
Um, I have district curriculum advisory. And so that meeting was February second. Um, and there were two main points that, well, first of all, the, it was met, uh, the meeting was virtual because there was a boiler issue here at the DEC. So um, the first was that there's a new um, district staff development team. And so the advisory group learned about that new team made up of teachers and principal representatives from each of the schools. Um, including early childhood. And there were two purposes for that group to bring coherence to professional development plans across the district. And to understand best practices in staff development and adult learning in order to support the implementation of highly effective professional learning experiences. There was an opportunity to ask questions, provide feedback to that. And the second part of the meeting. Um, we look, we heard about the achievement and integration plan, which we've already heard in great detail today. So I will not go into that any further. Um, and an opportunity for, for questions and feedback on that. And lastly, that group will have their last meeting for the school year coming up April sixth. So that's curriculum advisory.
Did you have another one too?
I do have another one and um, um, Director Peterson or Donna, please add into this because this was facilities. So we had facilities meeting on February ninth. And I'll give you from my um, notes, so feel free to add in the pieces that I missed here. Um, we already heard about the, um, what we heard from um, Adam Gomendin about the roof updates. And um, the plans for the roof and the multiply roof and the thirty year um, warranty on that. And um, the condition of the roof, roofs across our district. And so Jeff gave a great presentation on the LTFM bonds. However, we got to hear a little bit about um, the progress of where that is at. As far as waiting on insurance and so on from that storm last spring. Um, there are some summer projects coming up and that is the turf will be replaced up at the um. Uh, field for the, the football, lacrosse, soccer, I don't know who else is plays up there, but that field. That we've been talking about for quite some time. And that will, I believe, start the second week of June and take about four to five weeks to complete that. So that is a summer project and there's this, and then also um, security cameras, is that right? Security cameras and that there's in um, security cameras being installed district wide, some outside security cameras. Um, around parking lots, around uh, the stadium and different places. And that is what I have. What did I miss?
Moving forward with a, a study of facilities.
That's correct. Yeah, do you want to talk more about that since you were there?
Sure. Um, there was talk, there's a, going to be moving forward with a um, a study. Uh, regarding all the facilities needs around the district. Everything from perhaps reorgani- reorganizing space to make it more efficient in the high school. Um, to um, athletic facility needs, et cetera. So um, there's no timeline yet, but that's uh, likely moving forward.
And that, I wrote in my notes um, that there has not been a study done like this accro- in the district for over twenty years. Um, and um, we got to hear about some of the obstacles or challenges to keep up with our current fields. And um, the, the grounds that we have and the. And irrigation issues and things like that. And so just really a study to take a look at all of our spaces, our athletic spaces and activity spaces. I miss anything else? Jenny?
Um, is it my turn? Oh, okay. So I'm gonna mine our community ed and facilities. I'm just gonna put those together because they both had the same theme. Um, community ed had a very passionate meeting about our lack of spaces for the community. To do groups, activities, and then that followed right into the facilities meeting, which was echoed with. Um, the community ed people came with to the facilities meeting. Um, and just talked about the same thing. So I loved that meeting. Um, he just, it was the athletic director and the grounds, um, buildings, Adam. They just talked about comparing our small school to surrounding giant districts. We have just as many or more kids that do activities, athletics, community events. And we have about what, a third to a fifth or a sixth or an eighth of the facilities that they have. Um, our youth basketball, Madamida Youth Basketball plays in Cottage Grove. Um, our state gymnastics team, every year, they have um, two thirds of a gym to practice in. And somehow make it to state every year. So it um, was really good. And just what Paul said, we would like to approve a study going out of if our buildings and grounds meet the community's needs. It'd be an all community survey, correct?
I don't know if that's been determined, but certainly would be sensitive to needs of the, the community and how they could benefit from.
Yeah, seniors, seniors having a place more than just this room.
Yes, please.
I'll just add, so next week, we have our meeting, our first meeting to look at what that would entail to do a facility study with a consultant. So we'll have more for you soon.
Yeah, and as my comment, I'm really glad to hear that there's a lot of progress happening here because that's one of the things I've heard significantly about the past month or so from the community is a desire for additional investment, specifically in our athletic facilities. Because I think we've all heard multiple times that things are maybe not on par. So glad to hear there's progress being made there.
I have a question. Is facilities tied in with this Stillwater Road project at all? That there's going to be the open house on?
We haven't brought that to the facilities, no. We do have our Safe Routes to School Committee, and so through there, we've been advertising. That's the group that has kind of been driving a lot of the advertising for it.
Okay, any other committee reports? Lucy?
Gifted and Talented met. I didn't write the take-down. Well, we met. On the 7th of February, Jen Reichel leads that group. And we went over the fact that the committee's advisory, it's an input committee. We talked about the responsibilities of advocating learning and becoming a community. We went over the vision that focuses on readiness for advanced academics, support for parents are two of the key ideas for that group. And then we heard updates on a lot of things happening in the district around Gifted and Talented. Yeah, Wildwood OH, the secondary programs, and what would be happening in the future. What I liked about this group is it's an opportunity for parents to voice what's happening for them and their students. But it's also confidential, so it's not something I can go over each and every little thing. But it's a safe space for parents to have an opportunity to get feedback from the district. We always have a learning time together, so we read an article together and ended an activity together. And then it wrapped up with the sharing of good books and resources for parents who were there. And we meet again in April.
That, can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, move. By Kelly? Seconded by Paul. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.
Do you need a check?